So it is now six thirty-two. It's six thirty-two PM. Today is Tuesday, July 6th, 2021. This is a regular meeting of the City Council and WPCA, participating via Zoom. We have... Nobody. So, present at the, here in the council chambers, we have Councilman Waldron, Councilwoman Wagner, Councilman Rabino, and Councilwoman Roulett. So we do have a quorum. I'll keep an eye out to see if either Councilman Oliver or Councilman Kevin Arrow show up. At any rate, before we begin the meeting, could we please stand and pledge the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number one. I will, I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public in accordance with Section 4, Subsection E of the City Council WPCA Meeting Rules of Procedure.
Move one.
Thank you, Councilman Rabino.
Second.
And second by Councilman Waldron. Questions? Oh, no, I don't need any questions. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone from the public wishing to address the board?
Good evening. I'm Steve Ivey, 417 West Side Lane. I came here to appeal to you regarding the city pool. My opening statement is "Save the Summer." I'm here to protest the closing of the city pool. The statement from the Park and Rec Department claimed the failure to secure lifeguards as a reason for not opening. Several articles in a paper stated that recruits were only offered minimum wage. For hundreds of our city residents, this centrally located pool would be the only opportunity for these kids to cool off during the hottest summer days, or even have a chance to improve their swimming skills, which we do need for future swim teams. While other surrounding towns have staff lifeguards at their swimming areas, we don't. I have to question if there was a plan, has anyone worked with YMCA to recruit directly from their lifeguarding classes? Why wasn't something higher than minimum wage offered to retain guards? Budgeting and hiring at 2019 wages seemed to be a failed approach. Note that lifeguards require a training class and written performance test for certification. Cost ranges from $250, $400 to attend the class, and also recertification costs $175 every two years. Considering that lifeguards hired for the summer will only be able to work eight to 10 weeks, should barriers to entry be supplemented to help recruit? Or offer a wage high enough that these employees would be taking home less than minimum wage after paying for their costs? I would think that the people getting this special certification are expecting more than minimum wage, and you should too. What will happen to the funds budgeted for the summer pool? If not for the pool, I would hope that it would be directed to playgrounds and alternative recreational opportunities, or at least drop the fees to use the ball fields. I believe the summer still can be salvaged for the hundreds that would use this pool. Please make this a better summer for our fellow residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ivey. Still open to the public, other members of the public wishing to address the board? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to item two on the agenda. Item two, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held June 21st, 2021. So moved. Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner.
Second.
And second by Councilman Waldron. Questions on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm recusing.
And...
Staying from the vote.
One abstention would be Councilwoman Roulett. Thank you. Item three, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointments of Kristi Bardo and Ian Johnson as regular members of the Arts and Culture Commission to fill the remainder of the four-year terms expiring on December 31st, 2024.
Move three.
Thank you, Councilman Rabino.
Second.
And second by Councilman Waldron. Questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendations of the Services of the Elderly Commission and approve the mayor's appointment of alternate Commissioner Ed Wilmot as a regular member of the Services for the Elderly Commission to fill the remainder of a three-year term vacated by John Solano and expiring on July 6th, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner.
Second.
And second by Councilman Rabino. Questions on the motion?
No questions. These seem excellent choice.
Yes. Other comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Services for the Elderly Commission and approve the mayor's reappointment of Commissioner John Riggs as a regular member of the Services for the Elderly Commission for a three-year term expiring July 6th, 2024.
So moved.
Thank you. I heard Councilwoman Wagner. I heard Councilman Waldron. Are there questions on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendations of the Services of the Elderly Commission and approve the mayor's appointment of Tina Venini as an alternate member of the Services for the Elderly Commission.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roulett. Second by Councilman Rabino. Are there questions on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2021 Management Resolution Updates as described in Personnel Director's Memo dated June 25th, 2021.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roulett.
Second.
And second by Councilman Waldron. Are there questions on the motion? I know Jamie LaMaire is on the phone if there are questions. Hearing none. I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion by the City Council here enacting as a WPCA to accept the recommendation of the WPCA Administrator to waive the bid process and award the contract for the supply and installation of two roll-up doors to Torrington Overhead Door Company, Inc. for a total amount of $24,674.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Wagner. Second by Councilman Rabino. Questions on this? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Purchasing Agent and the Parks and Recreation Superintendent to extend the current bid contract with Building One Facility Services LLC for cleaning services at the Army Building and Teen Center through fiscal year 2122 at the same price and terms as a current contract.
Move nine.
Thank you, Councilman Rabino.
Second.
And second by Councilman Waldron. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Deputy Public Works Director/City Engineer to award the contract for the relocation of City Hall Water Fountain from City Hall to Franklin Plaza to Yield Industries LLC for a total cost of $34,440 to be funded by the Arts Place Making Grant, $27,822, and the Parks Department, $6,618, and authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city regarding the award and execution of the contract agreement.
I'll move ten.
Thank you, Councilman Rabino. Seconded by Councilwoman Roulett. Are there questions on the motion?
Yes, I do have a statement. Last year, due to COVID, we had to close the pool. We cut programmings, and there was a balance of funding. This year, we began the year with an increase of fees for use of facilities and giving little time to teams and organizations to raise additional funds. The splash pad is not ready, and we announced the pool closure this week due to lack of lifeguards. Those lifeguards would be paid $13 an hour when elsewhere it is $15. Lifeguards usually pay for the training and are to take responsibility for saving lives and monitoring pool safety. We could have used that funding to increase the wages and be more competitive. Or could we have used that money now that we can't open the pool for programs to provide cooldown opportunities with the cooperation of the water company and other organizations in town? I feel Parks and Recreation funding should be used to maintain facilities, plan year-round programs, and implement them, not to be used to move a fountain, at least not now. We expect its staff, which has been greatly reduced, to accomplish miracles, and then we deduct money from their budget, and thus I will be voting no.
Well, this is an opportunity, you know, to have a conversation about the pool. Is this what you prefer?
I would prefer that perhaps we can do that down in Business by Mayor and Members, but this is specific to the fountain.
No, I know.
And we're talking about $6,618, and I know that Mr. Drew and Brett are both on the call. I don't know if either one of you wanted to take a moment to explain what line item this is coming from and that it is not impacting the $60,000 or $59,000 that we restored to that budget for hiring Parks employees for the summer.
Good evening, council. I can jump in. So, the additional funding from the Parks Department, as the mayor indicated, does not come from the operation and maintenance budget or the funding available to procure part-time staff or employees for the Recreation Department. It is coming from the capital outlay of Parks Minor or Parks Major one to be determined. So, it does not, it is not coming from Mr. Simmons' budget and what he requested to procure staff for his programs.
Thank you, Ray. So as you heard, this is coming from capital outlay. You know, it's, those are the funds that we set aside for park improvements. What do we know? We know that Franklin Plaza is considered a park. This is a modest sum of money. I think that anybody who knows anything about the fountain of which we speak, this is a Frederick Olmsted, of the Olmsted Brothers fame fountain. It was commissioned by the Daughters of the American Revolution. It was originally installed in the city of Torrington in the five-way intersection as a, although they were automobiles back then, horse-watering, dog-watering station. And it was, actually, I think, and I'm looking at you when I say this, July 6th, 2021? Was that when it was actually installed? So fortuitous that we should be making this decision on July 6th, 2021, exactly 100 years later, to bring this fountain, which currently sits in a rather obscure location and is unappreciated for what it really is, to bringing it to a very high-profile location where I think it'll bring much joy and... It's hardly a splash pad, but there will be water at the location. So that is what the motion is before the council at this time.
I appreciate that, and I do understand the history of the fountain. I've studied that as well, and it is a remarkable piece of sculpture or installation. I'm just saying no on principle because while it came from a different fund, and it came from capital funds for Parks and Rec, what is to say we could not transfer capital funds to help out Parks and Recreation when we're in a situation like we are now with the pool closure? So just on general principle, I'm going to stick to my decision. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? I'm moving of the fountain.
No, it's a capital project, one of which I love the historic piece of it. I think we're doing a lot in, you know, the Torrington downtown area to restore some of that, so I will support it.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, moving on to item 11. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Innovative Engineering Services LLC to act as a commissioning agent for the construction of the new high school, middle school, and central offices, and authorize a mayor to execute the commissioning agent services agreement.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner.
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilman Rabino. And just for everyone's information, I did reach out to Mario Longobuco this morning to confirm that the Building Committee and Board of Education have already both approved this bid. This was the lowest bidder for the project. Other questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the city clerk to enter into an agreement with Permittium LLC of Pinewood, North Carolina for online vital record processing.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, and seconded by Councilwoman Wagner. Are there questions? I see our city clerk is here. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, I'll entertain a motion by the City Council here enacting as a WPCA to approve the following payments from Fund Number 490, Sanitary Sewer Capital Improvement. These are all going to Yield Industries for invoice 1091 for $10,400, 1100 for $8,500, and 1090 for $15,000.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roulett. Seconded by Councilman Rabino. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 14, I'll entertain a motion to accept Corporation Council's recommendation and authorize a mayor pursuant to CGS Section 12-179 to release the leas described in Attorney Michelle's memo dated July 6th, 2021.
Move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roulett. Seconded by Councilman Rabino. Questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 15, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated on the list dated July 6th, 2021.
Move it.
Thank you, Councilman Rabino, and seconded by Councilwoman Wagner. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item 16, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
Move it.
Thank you, Councilman Rabino. Seconded by Councilwoman Roulett. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? In the room, anything from the city clerk's office? Yes. Yes. I'll go to him.
Thank you for passing the permittium software. It's going to be a nice feature for our residents. They'll be able to order their vitals right from their phone. Honestly, we get requests. People are like, "I'm driving in. Can I send in the form right now?" So it'll be great. We did $10,460 worth of vital requests in June. So it's big business for us. And our big news is, for the first time ever, 100% of the city clerk's staff are certified Connecticut Town Clerks.
Yay.
Yes, John Draper and Ingrid Smith have spent two and a half years completing the process. They studied hundreds of state statutes, and they passed a rigorous exam. Wouldn't you say it was pretty rigorous, John? So they'll be getting their certificate from the Secretary of the State or the Lieutenant Governor at our conference in September, so congrats to John.
Congratulations.
That's a succession plan.
That's nice. That works well.
All right, so Mr. Drew, anything this evening?
Oh, I have nothing, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Towsey, anything?
No, I have nothing. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Cousins.
I have nothing. Thank you, mayor.
All right, and I don't know if Jamie LaMaire is on still? I know she was not feeling well, and I do appreciate that she called in in the event there were questions. Brett Simmons, anything this evening?
Well, we hope to have our fireworks this Friday, but we have a rain date for Saturday, so we'll be reaching out to our fireworks vendor. And Comafurts, who is in charge of our carnival, will try and figure out a game plan. Obviously, the weather right now doesn't look good for Friday, so we'll make a decision either Thursday night or Friday morning.
Thank you. Brett, while we have you on the call, did you want to talk a little bit about the challenge that you had finding lifeguards this year?
Yes, absolutely. You know, we started back in February trying to recruit staff. We typically start out with staff that are returning. Obviously, that presented a big challenge from the start because we didn't, we weren't able to open last year because of COVID. So, you know, we were pretty much starting from new, starting all over. A lot of staff that we've had come back year after year had found other opportunities. Good for them, bad for us. You know, there were a few staff that had, you know, opportunities in the school system to teach summer school, so they were not available, one being our longstanding aquatics director, which presented a whole nother challenge, you know, just trying to build from, I guess, the top down, which, you know, I'd tell you, you know, one of the great things about the pool over the years is that, you know, we recruit lifeguards early, get them in there, you know, after they finish their sophomore year in high school. Hopefully, they continue on through college, and we have them for six years until they graduate. And it allows us to have that, you know, increased experience and then be able to recruit new staff coming in. You know, we did go, you know, above the curve as far as minimum wage. Minimum wage right now is $12 an hour, not moving up to $13 an hour until August 1st. We were starting our lower-end lifeguards at $13 an hour right from the start. That was our plan. Our range was $13 to $17 an hour. And, you know, that's negotiable, but we need to be able to have people come into the room and be able to interview for those jobs and, you know, to be able to get them on board. We didn't have, you know, the interest this year. And we tried everything we could, working through our personnel department, social media, going through the school system to try and recruit people. You know, I do think next year we have to look at increasing the wages. You know, but like I said, we didn't fall short on that, in my opinion, this year. You know, we were a little bit above the curve. Maybe we could have been a little bit more above the curve, but how do you know? And we did everything we could since February to try and recruit enough lifeguards. At the end of the day, you know, we had some that found out their opportunities that were, we already had the paperwork filled out for. They were ready to go, and they ended up ultimately finding other opportunities that were better for them. You know, maybe as an internship or something to build their profession as a college student. The few that we had were lifeguards that, a couple of them hadn't even worked in a professional setting as a lifeguard. They just got recently certified. I did not feel comfortable putting them in that place, myself in that place, or the city in that place, to be able to safely run a pool.
And I would only add that I know that Mr. Simmons and I had numerous conversations about this over the last six or eight weeks. I will tell you, he was on the phone constantly, calling educators that he knew were, you know, deeply steeped in the swim programs through the school system or through camps. I can attest to the fact that he was doing everything that he could to recruit. I think the biggest challenge we have in the city of Torrington is we have a shallow pool, no pun intended, of candidates that are available to do this. When you get into waterbury, you have a much larger population to draw from. So we're challenged by the fact that we don't have a large population to draw from, challenged by the fact that there are also state ponds and parks in the immediate area where some of those job opportunities are a little more attractive, and private camps that kids are committed to and reluctant to leave because those camp experiences take them well into their adulthood. I know for a fact that when we talk about the aquatics director, because of all of the gaps in learning and all of the available resources for the school to bring in summer camps, summer programs, those hands-on learning experiences, that a job opportunity in the summer that pays you $40 an hour versus a job that pays you $17 an hour is a no-brainer for that, those individuals. So I would like to say that Mr. Simmons did work, you know, at great lengths to try to get this pool open. I would also only add that it was our hope upon hope that the splash pad would be our saving grace, that that would be available to families as a cooling station. The amount of construction challenges that were encountered in digging that structure into place is unparalleled. If there was a shovel in the ground, there was something to be encountered by way of a conduit, an electric line, a gas line, a sewer line, a ledge. So even that park, the splash pad, became sort of a fleeting thought that we might, it might at least save us some of the grief of not being able to open the pool. I don't know, Brett, did I cover it all?
Yes, mayor. Yeah, you know, it's been a challenge with the splash pad, and we've been working right along with our consultant and our contractor. You know, believe me, we're, we're in it for recreation, to provide opportunities for the community as much as we can, and we do what we can to provide those opportunities. It's, you know, disappointing, you know, I, you know, I take it personally to heart, you know, any time that we can't provide an opportunity, and we'll take it as a challenge to see what we can do to make it bigger and better in the future.
I just would like to add that I totally appreciate what Brett has put into this and the hours that he's put in and the planning that he has been working on. I think maybe we could think about, Brett, and this is only a suggestion, reaching out now to like the swim team and the Y, and maybe even PAL in preparation to doing something for next year so that it's, you know, kind of ahead of the curve.
Absolutely. I would add, when you talk about the swim team, and I'm going to, I'm going to call upon Coach Waldron, even the swim team did not have the participants this year. We found that there were kids that just did not come out for the swim team.
Yeah.
So first-time swimmers in the pool that were not members of the team.
And I don't mean that, but this might be an opportunity to build that swim team with the high school. This, you know, partnerships can sometimes create amazing things. And I'm thinking of my own community when I was growing up, and then later when we lived in the Adirondacks, we lived on a lake. But we also had the fire department set up a shower every once in a while so that kids could go into the park and be under some kind of a spray shower. And so is there any opportunity, if we get another heat wave like we've just had, that we could do something a couple of times a week, maybe with the help of the volunteer fire departments and working with the Torrington Water Company to have an hour, three times a week, where kids could go to cool off? Just be another recreational opportunity? It's just, I'm thinking off the top of my head, but just trying to remember past experiences and what my own children enjoyed when they were little, and, you know, how we can come together as a community to provide for their residents. But thank you, Brett. I appreciate the work that you do.
I think that one of the other things that we can do is remind our families that Burr Pond is a state park and it is free. They, certainly if they can't get to a local swimming pool, they can swim at Burr Pond.
If they can get to Burr Pond, but we don't have a lot of transportation. So, you know, for some families, that's not as easy to do as others. Just some ideas. That's all. We need to just come together.
Brett, I apologize for not putting these questions out earlier, but I too am really disappointed about the pool not opening. So I did have just a couple of questions. One is, when you posted the hourly rates for the lifeguards, were they posted 13 to 17, or they posted starting at 13?
No, we did not provide a range. And that range we have in our budget, so no, we did not provide a range.
And I think, I wish, you know, to be honest with you, this came before us earlier. You know, we didn't have any programming last year, so there's got to be some savings from last year or some contingency funds. I also wondered whether or not we were in competition, and you mentioned that with other municipalities, what their ranges were. and you mentioned that with other municipalities, what their ranges were. But, and I know we can't turn the wheels backwards, but it is, you know, I come from a swimming family and definitely a swim team, whether it be the YMCA or the Torrington High School. So I'm really disappointed. I've heard from a few people that are, you know, legitimate taxpayers who express that, who don't have availability to, you know, their own pools. But, you know, I wish, you know, and we want to be partners with you, Brett. I think when you're talking about partnerships and your challenge, we don't want to take over the administration of your, of the mayor's oversight, but, you know, to provide some kind of incentive. And I know how hard it is to find people to work, particularly with unemployment being extended until September. I don't know if that applied to any of the potential candidates. It's really hurt the workforce. You know, we have 30 positions that are open where I'm working right now and unable to really solicit candidates. And hopefully in September, when this goes away, unless they extend it again, it certainly has been a burden for any industry. But I do have to say, you know, for the record, I'm really quite disappointed. But could you answer, do you have the knowledge of the other areas in terms, so we have something to work for next year? You know, we really need to do, we need to open this pool next year, not, you know, any... And also recruiting, and I appreciate hearing that you've been recruiting since February, but how are we compared to Litchfield? And I know that they have, you know, now a fee to go to the Bingham Lake. I mean, I just, I would have loved to, maybe I need to go into Parks and Recreation Commission. Maybe you don't want me, but I'm going to be retiring. But it is, you know, and I know you articulated and I know your passion for recreation. But you could answer that question, I'd appreciate it.
Well, one, you're always welcome to come to a commission meeting.
I know Patty Fairchild wants me.
I report, you know, obviously to the mayor and Ray Drew and the Parks and Recreation Commission, and they've been updated, you know, throughout this process, you know, of what we've been working with. And, you know, we tried not to give up until there was a point of no return. We needed to make a decision. You know, at one, at the point we made a decision, we knew we weren't going to have adequate number of staff. We didn't want to leave staff that we potentially were going to hire hanging out there where they could possibly have other opportunities. So there's, you know, there were, you know, a couple of components that related to that. Plus, we needed to let the public know. I mean, we were, you know, usually selling pool passes, doing all that. We're getting phone calls. You know, my staff's taking 30, 40 phone calls a day. At one point, we needed to make a decision, you know, so it's not going to be feasible for us to open this year. We can't let our potential staff, very few that we had, just leave them hanging out there without an opportunity to be able to have another opportunity. And we need to let the public know, and we needed to relieve that burden for our staff that are receiving multiple phone calls a day, fielding calls and saying, we're going to make a decision next week. We're going to make, just, we had to draw the line. You know, as far as, you know, comparing ourselves to other departments, I would say those that were able to open last year or those that are year-round facilities were in a lot better position than we were because, one, they had people working last year, or, two, if they're a year-round facility, they have that core of staff that they could draw from. So those folks were definitely in a lot better shape than we were. Being one year off is rebuilding. We're rebuilding. And now we're rebuilding again because we're going to have two years off. Do I feel good about it? No. And are we going to work harder to make it happen? Yes. But I, I mean, like you said, I mean, we can't turn back the wheel. We did everything we could do to try and open this summer.
And thank you. I will certainly respect the decision of yourself and the commission and the mayor. It just, thank you. That's it.
We're all disappointed, devastated, actually. I, my last visit before I left for vacation last week was to the pool and to the splash pad because we knew that this was, you know, a situation where we were up against a wall. And we had to make some very difficult decisions. I was just looking up, when you asked about Litchfield, I'm just looking up all of the job openings for lifeguards. And there are, according to this, 44 positions that are open and unfilled. So I think that that's a clear indication. I'm also looking at the hourly range, and it is between 13 and 16 for each one of these positions. So I would agree, you know, looking at that salary range next year is prudent. Working with the YMCA and any other certification programs starting now is prudent. And these are all the things that Brett and, you know, Patty Fairchild has had a lot of conversations about this, but...
And I would just hope that, you know, I know Brett had indicated they didn't post the range and they are posted just...
And those jobs are still posted on our website, by the way. If you go on our website right now, you will find that both the aquatics director and lifeguard positions are still posted.
Yeah.
And I wish Jamie was on the phone to tell you that the difficulty they had with getting anybody in for an interview was no responses.
Going back, Steve Iveyne said something about save the summer. And I was just thinking about that. We used to have, we were volunteer firefighters, we used to have wet downs and splash downs when they got a new vehicle or just on, it was a really, really hot day. And I'm just wondering if there's any way our insurance or our planning could cover that just a couple of times, once a week, once, you know, every couple of days? Something that we can do, something to just make it a little bit of fun for an hour at the end of a hot day so that if a parent comes home from work and he's hot and he can take his kids and go walk through a fountain or something with them, it might be just some little, some gesture that would help save the summer or show some kind of consideration.
So Brett, maybe that's something you can take to the commission and see if there's something you can work out?
Yes.
All right, and we can maybe through Corporation Council's office just check with our insurance company about that?
Something I was just thinking about, yep.
Yeah.
Good. All right, thank you.
Or maybe shuttles to Burr Pond.
I know. The PAL bus, you know, maybe we reach out to the PAL program and see if there's a PAL bus. That was a good idea.
Yeah.
All right. Well, now that I'm on Northwest Transit, maybe I can talk to them and see if they do a bus up there.
You're on the board now.
I'm on that board.
Power to the mayor.
All right, I hope that I, did I hit up all of our department heads?
Me, but I have nothing.
Other assignments.
Yeah, I think that's it. Okay, we'll move on to item 17, business. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the mayor and members.
Move 17.
Thank you, Councilman Rubino, and I heard Councilwoman Rouwett, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, starting with Mr. Walden?
Well, it's summer.
Summer, we're hot, there's no pool.
But it seems like there's just, I don't know if it's just the, still the COVID year after effect that things just aren't running like they should. I mean, I volunteered at Camp Rekomen today, which is not functioning this year. And that's a, that's a total sad story in itself. It's almost like they're trying to shut it down.
Yeah.
And it needs to stay open. And so that's a story for another day. But, you know, the pool, lifeguards, just, you know, I don't know what, where the kids are going. I had a couple of students this year who took a life-saving class, and they're working at Lakridge. So I don't know what the difference is between the town and Lakridge. But there were some, you know, some kids getting certified, but I don't know where they're going either. I mean, you think, that used to be a very popular job.
Yes.
And you know how there's adults that don't want to go back to work? Do the kids not want to go back to work?
I think part of it is that up until May, they were still learning remotely, still masked. You know, their, their, their summer plans are, you know, somewhat set in May. But, yeah, I agree, I don't, I don't know.
Same, they're finding the same thing too, with they're trying to go back to a vacation status that you had before, but last year you didn't. And so now everything is questioned. You have to really investigate and question your decisions. Maybe, you know, part of the school career pathways for part-time work while kids are going to school could do something like that. Anyway, welcome back to...
That's it for me.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wagner.
I have nothing.
Councilman Rubino.
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilwoman Rouwett.
Brett, are you still there?
Did you run away?
No, I've given you a positive. You know, thank you for making the fireworks happen this year. I think it'll probably be well-attended, and thank you for that. I figured since you've been beat up, I'll give you a thank you for a positive. But that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, I can't control the weather, just remember that.
Why not?
We're hoping, we're praying every day.
You can ask Patty to do it.
Brett, just give it a couple more bucks an hour.
No, really. Elsa, her name is Elsa. All right, there being no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouwett, seconded by Councilman Waldron, all in favor? Any opposed? We're adjourned, thank you all.
You got a good plan for fireworks, don't you?
I know, I'm going to see what happens. I have multiple people coming over, some strangers, I think. It is...